Okay, well, then I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic of the United States, one nation, on every level. And with liberty and justice for all.
The real call.
Mockler.
Here.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith. Here. Tzey.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
All right, are there any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Want to approve? Second.
Any discussion? Discussions? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Want to approve? Second.
It is a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Are there any visitors to be heard? I know. Um. One of my employees who lost his father yesterday morning. And this is a really busy time of year for us. So I have asked Laura Crittison to come in and help do data entry for us. And I'm we need it for this week because he'll be out all this week, so. And we've all been putting in extra hours and stuff already, so. I just wanted you to know that that's what was going on if you see her here. Okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Our condolences.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for finding a solution for that. Are we sending something, Carrie?
Yes.
Excellent.
I on another note, then, I went to the our historical preservation commission meeting last night. And just to give them an update on our construction projects. I took a picture of the third floor security update stuff. Left that with them. I left the picture of HVAC stuff, the the small, small overall picture. And we had quite a bit of discussion. I think I was there in discussion for over a half hour. But the only, the only, the only real criticism I heard was on the tuck pony. I think Kim Wilson thought that the contractor did too much. He thought that the, he thought that the project or the quality of the work was good, but he thought that there was more done that needed to be done. And I said, so I told him that in our opinion, as a commission, we did talk about that a little bit. And in our opinion, they did probably just write them out, you know? So. And it was relatively cheap. I mean, the project was a little less costly than I at least anticipated. So that was the only feedback that I had. Any questions here for for me from that? It was kind of a last minute thing, you know, I didn't really know that I was gonna go there until seven thirty yesterday morning, or, or know that the invitation was there. So that was my action. I hope that was, was good with all of you.
Really glad you did that. I think that that's a, I think that they probably really appreciate the communication, proactive communication from us, so that's great.
It was meant to be an early heads up, not to be anything really substantive, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's trust building and, and that's a good thing.
That's it.
All right. Well. Dennis, you're, you're up for a discussion of the state spraying contract.
Yes, for spraying, spraying the state right away. I did increase it this year by a thousand dollars over last year, the bid. Because last year I went open my bid by about three hundred, but I think chemical prices have steadied out now. They took big raises last year, and I guess I need, if you guys approve it, to sign it and they would like a cop, copy of the minutes in the and in an email.
Yep. I didn't see a signature spot on that. Did I miss it?
Hmm?
Signature line is what she asked.
I didn't see a signature spot on the paperwork that you brought in. Did I miss that? I put
Should have been.
Put everything in the packet. I don't think there was a signature.
No, there's, there's no signature line, but it just says a joint powers agreement will be sent to you for signature.
Oh, okay.
As soon as possible after this complete, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's the one you'll have to sign.
Okay.
But they send you the signature sheet after the bid sheets received, but they want the minutes with the bid sheet.
Okay.
Yeah.
There.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's the same as was last year, I think.
So what do we need today, then? A motion to
You, you need to move on.
I'll move to approve the bid. I'll second.
It is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. So we'll, we'll expect to see a signature sheet at some point in the future.
So. I guess you guys got anything else?
I don't.
We have our annual conference starting tomorrow and hereon, so I'm taking off today for that. And I'll find out at that whether I receive that grant that I told you I applied for. So I guess once I know that, I'll report back to you.
All right, great. Thanks so much.
Yep. Thank you.
Safe travels. All right, so Rod Polly, you are on for the bridge inspection resolution and to set the bid dates for materials.
Well, every, every year we have to pick an engineering firm to do our bridge inspections. I highlighted who I think we ought to pick. Or I had three of them before, but I, the one I presented to you. Because we run into a problem with our five-year plan. The two bridges, we were supposed to get a deck rehab on it. They went back and looked at the last inspection and for some reason I even know it's wrong. But now they want they're, they're looking to state things we ought to replace it. Because the piling underneath the armor around the piling is ruptured, which all that does is protect the piling. The piling is what supports the bridge. That has nothing to do with that, but the way our last inspector put it down there, the state's going with him. So I picked Alteg. This guy we've been working with Brad. Because Brad went in to try to look and they won't let him in there because he didn't do the inspections. So we had a meeting on last week with the state on Zoom. So I asked him, how do we get this rectified so we can get something done this year? And they said it would be better to have the same guy that's doing the five-year plan as our bridge inspectors, so they can, when they put it in there, they can explain why whatever they put in inspection, but he can't speak for, we had Johnson Engineering for the last sixteen years, but as you notice, they're not on that sheet anymore. They kind of quit, I guess, or disbanded, whatever you want to call it. Dan is still around, so. But he's not doing inspections. He's just doing some local stuff. But I feel that Alteg does some other counties around here. And the work Brad's done with us on the ditch and FEMA and all that stuff. I'm very satisfied with the work so far. So I'd recommend you go with Alteg.
I'll move to approve Alteg.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve exactly what we're approving. This resolution, is that a resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh four? Requesting DOT to hire Alteg.
Yeah, and just, just so you know, this year the state let us put these two bridges back on inspection. So we can get an updated inspection. Hopefully, we can still keep going and get it done yet this year if there's some changes, but there's only four or five bridges on the list this year. The even number years, which twenty-four, that's when they do everything. And then we'll have to pick it again. Every, every year we have to pick it again. So this eighty-twenty match with the state. We pay twenty percent of whatever's charged each engineering firm can only charge a certain amount, so somebody can't gouge in, somebody can't undershoot you, they all gotta be within the parameters the state set, so.
Okay. Sounds good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
So any, anything else?
Uh, not on that. No. But we got so every year we bid our materials that we use for the year. Whether it be metal pipe, concrete pipe, bridge decks, asphalt, crack ceiling, anything we use, we put out for a bid. And so we just need to set the date, and I think the bid opening, didn't you say, Carrie, had to be the seventh of March?
Yeah, I think for advertising.
Yeah, so we get it advertised and packets all sent out, so. I don't know what time do you want it?
Is that, is that enough time? To bid?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. We got people knocking at the door already.
I received an email yesterday asking about bids, so, yeah.
So I'll move to
You want to do it at ten, nine thirty?
Um, let's do nine thirty.
Three thirty.
That works.
I'll move to set the bid opening for March seventh at nine thirty. Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to set the bid opening for March seventh at nine thirty. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
That's all I have. We burned the tree pile up at the Brower site yesterday. Excellent. Picked the best day, I think, burn it, burned up. The guys are up pulling it in and this afternoon it'll probably rain and put it out, but we, the guy that came to mill it all up, he wouldn't do anymore because ended up, some of the old pile had bridge iron in it. So we had to, we had to burn this, we chipped most of it a couple of years ago, so. If you happen to see a big plume of smoke up there yesterday and today, and yes, I called it in as you can that's all I have. You got anything for me? Except for the meeting this afternoon?
All right, we're all set then. Thanks so much.
All right, thank you.
Let's see, is Lane on?
Yes.
Hey, so, um, Hazmat Grant, Lane, you're, you're up.
Yeah, uh, okay, I wasn't sure how my voice was gonna go until I actually started talking. So hopefully you can understand me a little bit here. I connected with Sophie from CCOG and I believe she's on as well. But we've agreed on a price and she has gone with the state's recommendation of five thousand dollars for the for CCOG to rewrite the plan, and that's following all of the new crosswalk items and everything's adjusted, so as a max, it would cost us about a thousand dollars. And again, Sophie's on, if you have questions pertaining to oh, there she is, questions pertaining to CCOG at all. I do believe this will be her, this will be her first one. But I have trust in her, I guess. She's do, she is also doing our pre-disaster mitigation plan, starting in a couple of months, too.
All right. Any questions? And so do we need to, do we need, does this require a vote?
Well, just just in the sense that it's the match was, it's unbudgeted and I don't exactly know what it's gonna exact cost is gonna be when it comes, when the bill comes in the future. So I may have to hit you up for a contingency.
Okay.
Move.
So we probably should just authorize doing the hazmat plan through CCOG, so and I'll make that motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to engage CCOG to do the hazmat plan?
And our share will be about one K plus or minus C.
Yeah, it's a twenty percent match of five thousand, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank, thank you, Lane, and hope, hope you're, hope you're feeling better. It sounds like you've had a rough week.
It was touch and go for a little while, yeah. But, all right, so thanks, Sophie.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Sophie.
Thank you.
Um. So Drew, you're up. We've got planning and zoning applications.
Yep.
Which I think everybody's had a chance to take a look at. And it looks like there are five.
So something we should discuss in executive session since it's personnel?
We can. I mean, I kind of did a deep dive in the statutes today and it, it looks like, you know, it's, it's up to us whether we want to discuss it in an executive session or not, so it's permissive. But not, not a requirement. So if, 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 to, you know, if, if the group wants to go into executive session, we can. If you prefer just to vote, we can do that.
I'd prefer to go into executive session.
I think it's probably a good idea so we can further flesh out our, our ideas here.
So should
Make that a motion.
Well, should we wait then on Drew so we don't have to kick everybody out?
Oh, we could.
Would you just, because there's just one person in front of you, so we could go to Lynn, that's, and then come back to Drew?
Okay.
I think that's a good idea.
Sure, let's, let's, let's do that. So we've got the mechanical electrical project bid and we need to set an advertising date. And possibly a special meeting. The twenty-first will not work for me. But, but like Thursday that week would.
Okay.
So we've got a total of what, two million, two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, eight hundred, eight hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars in total construction costs. And we've got a plan. So.
So why does it have to be the twenty-first? What's?
So Lynn and I went through the calendar and talked about the dates, and rather than hold the project up longer, we just thought if we could have a special meeting for that bid opening, since what you're gonna do is just open the bids probably and then defer it back to them until the next meeting. We figured maybe that would be, okay, just have a quick special meeting.
Because the fourteenth is too quick.
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the fourteenth was too quick for you guys, right?
Yeah, we we talked about the fourteenth a little bit, but we're we're using the rest of this week for some coordination items that need to occur and just wrapping up some of the drawings, so. We're actually gonna, gonna be sending out the final set next week, Wednesday or Thursday. Advertising can then be in the paper on the twenty-fourth and the third. We can do the tenth if we wanted to, if you want to run it three times. But to what, what we wanted to do is make sure we gave three full weeks at least with it on this, the building exchanges. So that bidders are able to have the time to get in their access of plans, look at them. We're gonna set a pre-bid meeting also, so that they can visit the site and get a little bit more familiar with the location and the scope of the work and things like that, so. Wanting to fit that in and we set that or looking at March tenth for that date for the pre-bid meeting. And then, once they attend that pre-bid meeting, then they have another full week to put their bids together, basically, and then submitting them on the twenty-first was the goal, so. If we did want to move it to the fourteenth, they'd get a little bit less time of looking at the plans. But we'd also probably want to look at moving that pre-bid meeting up, just so we had enough time in between the pre-bid and bid date, so that we're able to answer any questions that may arise from that meeting and get another addendum out, so.
The reason we picked the tenth for the pre-bid meeting was because there's no court.
Hmm. Okay.
So the, the twenty-third, we have a jail that Lynn will be part of. So that takes her a whole day.
Oh, that's the whole day?
For her.
Yeah.
Um. Did you need to be part of the bid opening, Lynn?
Um, not necessarily. But that's the tw, let's say twenty-first Tuesday, so.
Yeah, they were saying the twenty-third because the twenty-first doesn't work for Betty.
Oh, I see, I'm sorry.
Unless, you know, we're just gonna open bids, there'll be no decisions, right?
Right, correct. So it's, it's up to, yeah, and I, like I said, you guys can open them, document them, we, I can send a representative, Ryan can be there, Brett in our office could be there. I could step away from our jail meeting for a minute, so we can make it work, I think. I'm not, I'm not worried about that.
If we were to do it on the twenty-third, does that give you enough time to review them before the twenty-eighth? For us to approve it?
Um. Ryan, what are your thoughts on that? You know, having that four days or so between bid opening and approval?
It's probably fine. I anticipate we'd look at the numbers and, you know, make sure there's nothing strange about them, and then the one that we feel is, you know, the apparent low that has everything together. We'd call them and just ask them if they have any concerns about it. It should be a pretty quick process.
Okay. Okay. So can the, the twenty-third, nine AM work for everyone?
I will not be available in the morning on the twenty-third. I could be in the afternoon, but I, I shouldn't be busy till about noon or twelve, thirteen or so. Does that, so we can zoom in, Carrie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The last two weeks of March, I will be in Michigan. My granddaughter's having her second heart surgeries.
Which, like I said, there's, there's no decisions made that day, so even if you're not
You don't even need a quorum.
No, we need a quorum.
Or we gotta have a meeting.
Need a vote. But there will, there will be no vote, that'll be
And the quorum canon
Yes.
Include a zoom.
Okay.
So that's not
I can zoom in any. Be out there.
Okay.
Now, yeah, and having a couple of extra days having been on the other side of this as a subcontractor, I've had times where it's two to three week, three week, four week turnarounds on outfits and I as a subcontractor that would be the only bidder have like two days to get a, a bid put together, get a, figure out what the materials I'm gonna have to buy, how much that's gonna cost me from my suppliers, and then I've had a few times where I've had to inflate my bid by thirty, forty percent, just to make sure. So having short turnarounds are poison to the bid process and really hard on especially subcontractors. So a couple of extra days is what I'm saying is, is a good thing.
All right. So we're talking about setting the bid opening for March twenty-third at nine o'clock? Four, four out of five of us can make it. Does that make sense? Um. We need to, do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, we'll just make, I'll make the motion to have the bid opening that day.
Okay.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. We've got a bid, bid opening date. Any, anything else, Lynn?
Um, no, I think you have, I updated the, the potential construction estimate, schedule for the duration of construction that we had pulled together, where we're still looking into some of the electrical components, just to make sure there's no major lead time issues. We don't have big equipment like switch gears or anything that we need to, to be worried about, so I know those are long lead times, but we're looking into those just to make sure that some of the panels and things like that aren't gonna affect it. But otherwise, what we've kind of laid out so far was, we heard back from some reaching out to a HVAC contractor and getting some lead times on some of the major equipment, the boilers, the pumps, fan coils and the rooftop units, so we've kind of laid that out in progression of how we talked with them and how we had that working out and sequencing the work. Something we'll want to review a little bit more in depth with Carrie and, and her team and staff are when that work would be occurring, there's probably some times that if they can't be in the building working when, when staff is there, there could be some evenings or weekend times that there would have to be some work done, so. So those are kind of the variables that we're looking at right now with, with just the schedule and that could impact that duration of the construction. But right now, we're looking kind of a end of December as completion for, for the project, so. And then, yeah, that budget that you had read off roughly that two point, yeah, two point two seven seven million, so if there's any questions there, we do have a contingency of ten percent, about a hundred and eighty thousand, and then a, a spring escalation start or percentage in there for the bidding environment here, so. There is a, a small portion there for some, some unknowns or some things that might arise from the, from the bidding process, so. And then I think the only thing we updated from that are, well, not the only thing, but one of the major updates to the schedule was adding in the new emergency light, lighting and the new LED lighting in the administration offices. So that was about a hundred thousand dollar add from the previous budget that you had seen.
All right.
So, yeah, any questions? I can try to take those, otherwise, yeah, that's what we have for you guys today.
This is Ryan, I had one question. Do you allow email modifications of bids? Have you done that in the past as accounting? And Lynn, maybe you've already covered that, sorry, have you?
Nope, nope, go ahead.
So a bidder might mail in their bid, like, just say two days early. And they'll, they'll bid like four million dollars. And then they email in like within an hour of the bid time and they modify it. We would have to identify this in the specs that, that, that's allowed to be done. But what it's kind of nice for is that people don't necessarily have to drive to the bid opening. And also if it was like foul weather that day, and they couldn't, and they were late, you know, then they could still take care of getting their bid in. Have, have you done that in the past?
We haven't. We haven't. I don't think we've really, really had any call to. This may be a, a new circumstance for us.
Okay. Yeah, it's, it's not necessary, it's just something, I, I picked it up on jobs in peer, like, you know, people from Sioux Falls don't want to drive three hours to turn in their piece of paper at a bid opening, so they, they, they allow that with all the state jobs. We can get a little more detail on it if you, if you need to know, but just wanted to ask.
I think it's something we should probably try right now, because I, I'm wondering how much that's gonna happen for the jail.
Yeah.
So this might be a way to get our feet wet.
Yeah, but at lower, at lower risk.
So how does it, how does the bid come in secure then through the email? I guess, I guess nobody else will see it.
Yeah. And, and what, what we've done in the past, again, just to recap, so they mail, they mail in a bid that they know it's high, I mean, they, they want to be high, because in case in case something goes wrong, they don't want some low number and then get stuck with it, right? They, they've Um, they, they've put in a, a high bid and it's usually just an even number. And then there would be instructions in the, the instructions to bidders in the specs that, that they need to email by a certain time. Uh, I'm guessing it would probably be to Carrie. And then also either myself or Lynn, I think we wanna give two email addresses just so it doesn't get caught in a spam filter, you know, more likely that it'd go through. And then we would bring those uh with to the bid opening, those emails. Uh, and it, it only tells how much that's subtracted from the bid. It doesn't actually say what the bid is. Does that make sense? So if you
Okay.
If you bid, if you bid four million and you actually want it to be three, your email would just say subtract one million dollars. So it, it's still confidential that way. I, I think it's.
Lexus, you, you, you're looking troubled, Alexis.
It's been done in South Dakota before.
Yeah, with uh O S E government jobs. Again, just so that people don't have to uh drive to pier or if there's bad weather or something and, you know, if you're thirty seconds late, you have to throw your bid away. So it kind of avoids that.
And that's where Brad got the idea. It was from the office of the state engineers.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that it's compliant with you know, all the bid booklet information and everything else. I know there are times where there have been some slightly different rules for the state than there are for us. And I just have had no opportunity to look into that. I don't know anything about that. So if you guys have done this before and maybe have some wh- when do you wanna do this?
And I'm, I'm speaking totally from memory. I just thought of this this morning. So why don't I look up one of those past projects to get you a little more detail? I, I think I've got the, the concept right, but uh, I'll get you a little more info.
That would be great. Thanks.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah, thanks.
I have a question. Uh, I'm sure you, you, you mentioned this, but this is just for bid adjustments, correct?
It's just an adjustment. Yeah, the, the bidder would still have to have mailed in a hard copy of their bid. Uh, and you're just adjusting it, just lowering it. But I suppose somebody could increase it, but they, they usually shoot high.
Yeah. This, this is uh one way to help that scheduling thing that I was talking about earlier, right? I'd often have to, to uh bid high because I had not gotten a firm figure back from a supplier. And that supplier is third or fourth down, rung down, you know, so uh he, he gets notification that I wanna bid as the third rung down relatively late because uh uh, the, all these, this bids middle thing uh goes from, from the engineering on down to all the subcontractors and sometimes a subcontractor and subcontractor. Well, that last rung down there, when we're, we are uh ordering supplies, we may not get a firm number back in time to submit the bid. So like I said, you know, I may end up by necessity have to pad my bid by twenty or thirty percent uh for that item or perhaps for more than, than that, that item. And so my bid is a little high, uh higher than I would if I had more time to get, get all of my suppliers in line and set up. And this helps add a little bit of time in there for those last suppliers uh bids to come in. So I, I think in that respect, having been on the other end of this, I think it's a good idea, providing it's secure and legal.
Yeah, it seems like a neat system, you know, still confidential cuz we don't know what the initial figure was until we open the envelope. Is it something that we would expect that all our subs are familiar with or do we have to do, will we have to do a complicated explanation of how exactly this works?
Well, that'll be up to.
Yeah.
That's up to them, to Ryan and Lynn.
We definitely have an explanation in the, in the documents. Um, I, I speculate that it would be a, a familiar thing and they don't have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what I.
It's legal, it's neat.
Yeah, and it's, and it could uh more than likely would positively impact our bids.
All right.
All right, we'll get you more information on that and follow through. Um, just to make sure everybody's comfortable with it before we would write that into the instructions to bidders.
But how do we? How are we going to approve that? So you can get this out to bid cuz we don't meet for two weeks.
Um, we can um, I think we can review it with Carrie and get the, get the information to her. And then she can share it with you guys. I'm assuming that will work um for review. And then um you know, we can, we can edit that bid form and that instructions to bidder with, with the correct language before sending everything out next week. Is that something that would work, Carrie?
If we're in consensus, it could work, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like we're in consensus and agreed unless um, you know, our state's attorney uh determines that there's something about it that doesn't meet statutory um requirements.
Right.
Does that?
So can we make that motion then that will agree to this and approve it unless it's not legal, unless it doesn't meet statute?
Or provided that it meets statute.
Yeah. And we can make it on consensus. And if someone sees it and says, hey, I don't consent to this, then it, then it kills the deal. And that can be based on what uh uh Lexi tells us. All it would take is one of us not to consent to this.
Are you guys talking about being a vote on email matter? I, I'm confused.
No.
No, I would rather just make the motion to where if you could, if you're gonna see the statute that makes it legal.
I'm looking at the bid booklet right now. And so I'm just trying to see. But if you guys aren't, I mean.
We could make it.
Will you?
Consent.
If she kept looking, we can move on, right? And we can, and Carrie can let Lynn know, right?
Yeah, and.
What we can come up with. Just so we don't hold them up.
Sounds good.
Thanks, thanks uh for bringing that up. It could be something that could be valuable to us.
Yeah, and I'll send that information. I actually just found it here in an O S E front-end document. So I'll email that uh over to Carrie and she can share it.
Okay, super.
Thank you.
Good. So should we proceed with the agenda and leave the planning and zoning executive session the last? Is that the, the will? That looks like it's the consensus here. So vouchers.
Yeah, move to approve the vouchers.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vouchers are approved. Um opioid class action lawsuit, we would need a motion to join in the national opioid uh settlements.
Thought we already joined that or was that just a state one?
This is a new one.
This is a settlement.
So there's four different companies on this one, Walgreens, Walmart, C V S, I can't remember the other one, but uh, so there's four different uh documents to sign and um was just confirming. So last time um the Attorney General's Office kind of managing this and actually was encouraging us all to sign onto this um as I understand or as I recall, they then whatever portion of money that the state gets will be allocated then through them. Um, and it will determine what minor amount we receive. Um, as indicated last time, I don't think that we're gonna receive a lot of money from this, but um.
We're also not gonna sue them ourselves.
Exactly, exactly. So um, so yeah, uh same thing here, just different companies.
And there usually isn't much work to be done to just join the class and then it, it's pretty automatic after that. Sometimes you'll get a mailing or two.
Right, right. So you don't really get to complain, I guess, about this.
Yeah.
But if somebody else is doing the heavy lifting, and like I said, I, I don't really know what portion it was. We, so I don't have, I, I took a quick look through it, don't have any concerns. So uh, what encourages sign that.
I'd say move to join the class.
Well, second.
Yep. Hey, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, the employee assistance program contract renewal. So we'll need a uh motion uh to uh approve the contract with the Village Business Institute to provide employee assistance for county employees.
This is a good idea.
Yes.
It's what we've had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've had it for quite a while. We do see some usage, so I think it's a good thing to continue.
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll move. Second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to approve. Um, any further discussion?
What does it cost and has it up, has it increased?
It hasn't increased. Um, and it's usually right about nineteen hundred a year.
Yeah, it's sixteen fifty a year and it's a three-year contract. So I think we'll it, 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 it actually seems like a modest amount of money for what their, what their service is. And again, it's like so many things, you know, it, it, when, if it's there when you need it, it really makes a difference.
Yeah.
I think especially hearing you say that it's been utilized a little bit.
Yeah, and they do more than just um counseling. I mean, granted, they are there if there happens to be a you know, a critical incident at the sheriff's office or something where we need to um get some help for our people. But then it, you know, they also do all different kinds of counseling, but they do financial planning as well. So more than just um counseling.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna ask, are, are, do employees know about this? I mean, how, how do they find out about, about who to call and how to?
Um, so periodically they'll send out a newsletter and I usually forward that out to the employees just um to kinda keep that in the back of their mind that, that hey, it's there. And then that way, if they need it, the contact information is on that email. So if they save those, and they do, um the newsletters are kinda helpful too. They have some good um tips and tricks about different things, different topics. So I think they're quarterly, maybe.
Okay.
Do you get anyone utilizing the financial planning?
Um. I'm not sure. I'd have to go back and look at some of those uses.
I just ask if someone who's really tried to get people to utilize.
Yeah, and there's, I mean, they, they do retirement planning, they do budget planning, they do, you know, so lots of different things within that umbrella, but I think it's valuable.
Yeah.
I look at it as kind of a low-cost insurance policy in a way. It's there if they need it.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, any building updates?
I have one.
Okay.
Um, Dick Strasberg made me aware of a a grant that could possibly be available to the county for about seventy-five thousand five hundred dollars. Um, I'm checking into it. I looked through the paperwork yesterday and it seems like something that would be really great if C C O G could help us with it. And so I contacted Sophie and she's checking into that to see if that's something that they can do. Um. It's uh like an energy efficiency improvement type of grant. And I think that both the courthouse HVAC project and the new building would qualify. So I think we could use it for either.
Awesome.
We just have to pick or choose which one we're gonna use.
System Energy Star Program?
Um, it's a I don't, uh, it's a block, community block grant. Um. It's federal.
Related to inflation reduction.
So.
Or is it related to inflation reduction act funding or is it something different?
I think it's something different.
Okay.
Yeah.
I hadn't seen that in there. I've been trying to read through those. It seems like there might be some.
Yeah, so. Pretty um, pretty nice if we can get that grant.
Yeah.
Wow.
I mean, I, I, the grand scheme of things, I don't think it matters which project we use it on, but um, I think both would qualify.
Awesome.
Excellent.
Have you been able to contact the U S D A yet?
I have not. I need to, I need to contact that person again. I didn't hear back from them. So I need to I don't know whether they're even still there anymore, but
Yeah.
if not, I gotta find that general phone number to get ahold of somebody.
Okay. Dick, were you on the board when she came and talked to us? It's been a while. I mean, Leo was still on the board.
I think so.
There's some type of a grant through them. So we need to, we need to revisit that for the, for the new jail.
Hmm.
So.
Give them another bump.
Yeah.
Every seventy-five thousand dollars counts.
And then I'll have something for the building, but in the executive session.
Okay.
It'll be contractual.
All right. Uh. And any, anything, I think we're done with our agenda with the exception of the zoning issue. Um, and so I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. Um, discuss personnel and contractual matters.
Yep.
So motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're going into executive session.
Right.
Third time's the charm.
You're right.
One more time. Now you should be good.
Good now. Thank you. All right. I, I moved that we come out of executive session.
Second.
Go ahead.
There is a motion and a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in the, the general, general meeting again. And uh Alexa, maybe we'll re- return to that um that, that, that question about bid specifications and.
Yes, so um they can be submitted either in writing or by electronic means and uh modifications can also be submitted by electronic means, not telephonic, but we don't interact that. So yes, I mean, should we get to go?
Okay, so actual bids can be submitted by email also.
That is yeah, in five eighteen A seven, the procedures for issuing a contract with competitive seal bid proposals are as follows. And under subsection three, a proposal may be submitted either manually or electronically in a manner authorized by the purchasing agency.
Yeah. So how does that come in secure then through an email? How does that?
That's why I like this, the, the system that they're talking about. They give us a paper number. That number is sealed. You don't know what that is. So then what comes in in the email is just.
And it comes with a bid bond and that sort of thing.
But through statute, they can email the bid in.
Yeah.
Which.
If you want to authorize that, I don't think you, if you specify what you wanna do, and that's why I think you're.
Yeah, I like, I like your system.
Yeah, and I agree. I'm just looking forward to the jail project cuz
Oh.
I'm trying to figure out, you know, we were trying to use this one as our test subject.
Yeah.
I don't know. Do we?
I think we just stick with modifications.
Okay.
Exactly. Yeah.
I like that.
Have the traditional process that we've enjoyed for years and with the electronic modifications allowed.
Well, as a bidder, I think you'd be more comfortable with the initial bid in writing.
Oh, yes, yes, definitely. Yeah, you know, everybody's on the same playing field. You can be there in the audience seeing to it that that happened. That, that zip the, open the envelope and, and.
Yeah, and less scrutiny.
And go, yeah, and go through the, the process, the process of uh the checklist of what needs to be done in during uh bid openings with electronic modify- modifications allowed, which can save us money in the long run.
I think it.
Yeah, what happens if bids get lost in the mail? We haven't had it happen yet, but.
I've always wondered that.
Yeah. Um, well, if they're not here, they're not here because.
Although, are they? A lot of them do send like FedEx or something where they have that tracking. They have that confirmation that it arrived. So there is that.
Okay, well.
And I'd always sent mine where I had direct bids. I always sent mine with the receipt, receipt requested. So that I got a receipt that, that it had been delivered.
That how we wanna handle the jail too then? Just modifications electronically, no bids electronically, just?
I think that's a good move.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that seems like a good policy going forward.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, Alexis, you can tell me if you think it needs to uh go to a vote, but it, it seems to me that it could, it could just be our, our policy.
Yeah, we'll see what, we'll read what we get from the engineers and then we can, we can make a uh resolution. It's uh clarifying that, I suppose. Would that be the way to do this?
We never have. I mean, it's just, we know it now.
Yeah.
And the more we use it, the more it'll be.
Yeah.
Knowledge.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a part of the bid process that we don't really scrutinize. I mean, you, you know, the, the uh. Yeah, I think, I think it's a part of the bid process that we don't really scrutinize, I mean, you, you know, the, the, uh. Yeah, the consultant basically creates the, the bid, bid package, we set the date and it goes out. So I think we're good.
Right, so we need a motion then to allow bid modifications through email?
That seems like, yeah, I think that's the wise thing to do, would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, so we've already set the bid opening for the twenty-first, haven't, or the twenty?
Twenty-third, nine AM.
Okay, so I'll, um, make the motion to allow. Electronic modifications through email to bids.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries, any further business? Yes, planning and zoning, oh my goodness, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Tom Simmons, I'll second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, you know, I guess this should have, would have been under discussion, but I would love to have in the record a thanks. To everybody that, uh, that submitted the applications, you know, having a pool to draw from, they were all great applications, you know, I think that any one of those people we could have chosen for that role. And they would have been able to serve really well and, uh, just how much we appreciate them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and that, 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 that I hope that their interest continues because there will be more openings.
There'll be another seat open, I mean, up for appointment at the end of the year and another one the following year, so, yep.
There'll be seats open on, on other boards too, so there's, uh, uh, I know that. Several of them expressed interest in serving, uh, the county and, uh. There'll be, there are a lot of opportunities to do that and I hope each of these folks reapply for other, other, uh, opportunities there.
Travis, ditch board meeting today at seven one.
All right.
Yes.
So, any other matters to discuss?
No, just like Drew said, ditch board at one, at the extension four H building.
Right.
Or on Kitter.
It's four H.
What's that, betting fairgrounds?
Yeah.
And, uh. Our, our new protocols that, uh, there's no lunch there, so.
Yes.
Don't come home. It ain't gonna happen.
I was just saying yesterday, Miss Toby's.
We may have to get back there.
Yeah.
I mean, not just for the lunch, but when you walk in there, your phones don't work.
Yeah.
That's right. There is zero cell service in that building.
Yeah.
Faraday cage built into the.
Yeah, you. I didn't know that Toby had led lined the place.
He's looking to the pantry.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Well, I move to adjourn then if it was.
Second.
It's a motion and it's, to adjourn in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.